The Honourable Chief of Staff is going to proceed from Mr Beckley. And the events that have occurred in the past have started right now. So, in the absence of both Members, Becky and Kenny, last for the relation from Cabinet to Chair, Cabinet's room please.
Close, Council of Lords.
Second, others? That will be further further. Those who stand there. If we're imagining last to the Chair, Council of Lords.
The man was brought back.
All right, good set to announce some of the Chairman and Cabinet of the Page Service. Just like to say that I'd like to wish Roger Beckett all best in his illness and Terry King a quick recovery from his minor operation, or indeed his minor operation. I understand that Terry should be back within a couple of weeks, should be sure.
He certainly expected to be out of this with the less clear days. Knowing Mr Ken and that very active on keyboard.
Active, yes. So he won't have much of a voice, but he will be there. I've got my head over analysis there.
Nothing for me, Chair.
Declarations of interest, anybody?
Really like to point to SILS. It's like they're even a difficulty affected by the time you return from the change of that point.
Any others? Can we move on? Reports of decisions. To confirm the records of decisions made at the meeting, how long, 15th of, sorry, 15th of December. We'll be preparing on that. Is there a case to follow that? Propose that. Second that. Items raised by scrutiny. Do you have anything? Nothing received on that one, thank you. We move on then to reports of Director's Places. And the first one here is on to number five, which is tree policy, which is essentially exactly what we do at the moment. So there are codes of practice that take the way that trees should be managed. That's what we do, because we don't formally adopt a policy. It's simply regularising what we already do. There are no financial implications or something, because the bushes, the maintaining trees and the inspection, inspection area will stay exactly the same. It's just helpful in the event that we get any claims against us. Okay, if there's any, anybody got anything they want to raise regarding tree policy? I think everybody's had a chance to read it through. No matters to be raised by anybody on this round, like questions? We'll go forward to propose that, and then to try and propose that. And second that. There's a favour. Okay, we move on to food hygiene rating scheme. Now, if I could ask, the Grand Council of Representatives, please.
Members will probably be familiar with the scheme, because it's a scheme that operates across the country and we will be the last authority to adopt the scheme if that's necessary today. So this scheme is commonly referred to as scores on the doors. It's where the inspections are carried out by the offices in terms of food hygiene. Exactly the same process in terms of the inspections gone through. So there are no new requirements on the businesses, the same requirements. But the results of the inspections are converted into a rating out of five, which the business can choose to display or not display at the moment. It's up to them whether they put it on there. But the results will be available via our website and the FSA's website. So the recommendation is that we adopt this scheme, which has been shown nationally to improve food hygiene standards across the country. So there's no doubt this is a good scheme. It's been useful to have the experience that authorities have had in introducing it. We do think, well, we know that the FSA has the objective of making this scheme compulsory in the future and it would, for a variety of reasons, it would be a requirement to do that now. And recommendations subject to us successfully bidding for the funds to implement the scheme from the FSA. Our meetings with them indicate that they have a budget to do that and it would be keen for us to do that. So we have two officers from Peterborough here today who are specialists in this area. Should there be any questions from members?
Any questions, any further?
Just a final question out, but really I was very surprised that the government had not already adopted this scheme. I agree that it's been seen nationwide to improve safety. We need protection against the kind of diseases which can be brought about. And we look for, particularly for the young, and then we feel we're really involved with the whole country to support it. And sincerely look to be able to.
Any questions? Okay, we've exhausted that. So, class on to propose that. Class on to the second that. And third that, there's a favour.
Thank you, Chair. Probably all this is just last, that's what I can do.
Okay, move on to number seven. Form provisions building break cast to this disposal. So we've asked Director's Places to present this paper, please.
That's right. It's all right. Yes, this is basically, some time ago now, the children's centre building form provision building and the break cast been closed. And in consultation with the school where the building was positioned and we were leasing the land upon which it sat the schools, so they must have stayed home as a going concern in relation to a nursery provision, to which they've already got provision there, but wish to extend that because there was a need for it within the area. We've also negotiated retention for certain children's centre services out of which work to be continued within that building. This is formalising the process basically and transferring ultimately after a 10-year period the building over to CEBEC at Great Casterton. Provision around that is that we contacted the government department that originally did the funding and ultimately they would claw back the entire funding to dispose of the building meant in the way. The building is, we've had it valued, we've had it reviewed. It's not the type of module building that is particularly easy to move and benefits both the community, the school and themselves to retain the building on site and therefore seeking permission to grant a 10-year lease, which will enable the school to provide us with a sum of money to the value of 70,000 for the building, then hand the building over to the school where they can continue the use within it. They also agreed they can continue the use with us. We checked the government department, they are happy that that would then pass the expiry date for the clawback of any of the original funding and therefore there will be no risk in funding to the local authority in relation to that.
Thank you, thank you very much. For comment, discussion, please. Richard?
Thank you. I suppose two points. One is within 2.5, we offer about 70,000. Is that a confirmed figure that CEBEC have actually said they will do or is it likely subject to negotiation with the list?
No, it's an agreed term, agreed fee, and they are already fine under licence.
Just as a second part, within the paper, we do talk about DAFE and to prove it, but they got proven to have proved it. I've sort of got that bit, normal government. In the recommendations, we haven't actually put the caveat in, subject to DAFE approval, of you granting the lease. So we'd like to suggest that we amend in some respect what would be asked to vote on at one just to have the strap on subject to DAFE approval.
Any other questions to be raised on this one?
Further to Mr Griffin, said, I would therefore propose that the form orders approves, comma, subject to DAFE approval, comma, not the lease, etc.
Perhaps we'll use the first, we have a second that. We have a second that. Nice to hear, so decision recommendations as on here, but we're subject to DAFE approval. Or two. Sports and Recreation Facility Strategy.
Yes, it's quite a lengthy tone for those of you that have read through the document of some treatment of course, I'm not sure many of you have. It's been a work in progress for the whole of last year. We've been updating the sport facilities that we've got. The document that sits before you has been through scrutiny, scrutiny, writing comments, and we have been through all of our lower councils also adding items and commentary to the report. The Sport Recreation Facility Strategy will enable us to clearly identify and move forward with the needs of the community, although these can be reviewed and refreshed as we go through our community infrastructure levy refreshment each year. It will also enable us to comply with the pitch strategy that we require, which is subject to grant funding in relation to some of the works that we've already done on our government hub. So hopefully, rather than going further into this, you've had the opportunity to read the report, I think many of you have commented on it in the past. It does make some recommendations, but those recommendations are for review and will continue to be reviewed by Cabinet and by council as we proceed. What I would like to address, which to write is, this is not a time to see to definitely providing or commissioning particular pieces of work. This is giving us a picture as we are now. I can pretty much guarantee some of this will already change from the time that the original assessments were done. Because I know the communities are adding facilities as we speak and we're changing needs and requirements as we speak. But it gives us a clear strategy and direction that we can review as we go.
No more questions, please. Richard, put them first, please, sorry.
Overall, supported and yes, perhaps involved a bit, seems to be one of them. Two brief comments really. One is actually in the covering paper, we talk about noting a feedback from scrutiny, but actually there is no feedback from scrutiny within it. I know that they have influenced the changes within it. But is there anything in particular came from scrutiny that we shouldn't? And I suppose a final sort of bit from me, because I know others may have some comments on this, is within, obviously we make recommendations. I suppose my concern is that we make sure that this particular work we've been doing on SIL, we don't end up with conflicting priorities and the two things together. How do we ensure that actually happens?
I mean, I'll answer that. I mean, the SIL is under continuous review as the process goes on. Our section 106 commitments, if they were signed specific, for instance, under section 106, which still will exist. So in other words, if, having been, we were to build a housing state on top of a sports centre, then there would still be section 106 provision in relation to replacing that sports centre or requiring a funding that would replace it elsewhere. So that that will still add to and continue to add to this. And the community infrastructure levy work, we will continue to change as it goes on, as our requirements change, as our needs change, as our population grows.
Absolutely get that, I think I just want to be sure that there's no kinges there. We say yes, we will do it, it's more assurance than we have to have kinges actually, man.
Thank you, Chair. I think if we include that as an action in relation to the work being performed, when the work's being performed to cabinet, in relation to SIL, we can actually let the issue to run as I like to, to kind of balance it.
Absolutely, in accord with the specific aims and congratulate the team on very, very good work. However, as an observation, given that we have two active community communities in the county, each of whom have, because of the nature of the requirement for fitness and on so personal, extensive sporting facilities. I was very surprised that those were not noted in some kind of consultation taken by the local representatives of the MLD to see whether or not they could be needed in some way to the strategy. Again, this is an observation and I would hope that perhaps in the future, if we are looking at this stuff, we involve our community communities.
Thank you, yes, we did consult with the community communities. Obviously, there's some issues with actually getting behind the wire for some of those facilities. So there are none of the are listed in there, but it says no community access because they don't allow access to this. There are others where they have been. So for example, there's the Rook Ruler who've been using Kendra Barracks for some of their sporting facilities. But they're moving away from that now because there's obviously going to be some very significant developments with Kendra, which means that they won't be able to use that particular parcel. So absolutely completely agree here, this is a changing thing and it's something we do need to be aware of. Because as you say, there's quite a large problem with that, we do need access to those kind of facilities.
If I can, Chair, just to add to that, Mr. Phillips is right that we've always continued dialogue with our community communities in terms of access to those facilities. You make a good point because it isn't just about the SIL facilities, it's about the Kendra's and their families as well. And in terms of our public health, we're only in a clear role to make sure that they have access to the ability to go and stay fit and healthy. So we will continue that dialogue with the community.
Any other questions?
So just an observation, I'm really pleased that Mr. Phillips gave a very good introduction to the paper, which put it in context and explained exactly how the document would be used as guidance and things. I think it would be a living document. But my overall overriding observation is that, I'm not sure how much we paid to produce that report, but reports should not be paid by the outside, should be paid by the clarity and brevity and actually stand up. I found it very competitive to read through it, but it does give us all the biblical referenceology for the future.
Question, am I opening the internal response? No, that's fine. I have a question, if you don't mind. Can we come to talking about the snowball? We've got a column here that says a replacement of snowball. It strikes me as being a foregone conclusion, doesn't say replacement or refurbished or that matters, we'll refer to later. A very, very complicated area. Are you going to be coming back to cabinet with a request for taking this further and developing further thoughts on this?
Yes, in relation to, I mean, the swimming provision within Rotherham is good. It's at the required level at the moment. And we mustn't forget, I spoke of the overriding element, this is, Rotherham is one of the most active counties in the whole country. So actually, we've got excellent provision on all of our sports, right way across the county. The swim ball, it will be under review because obviously it is of a certain age and a certain style. If we were to lose the swim ball open, we would as a county need to replace it with some, with some form of provision. But as we are at the moment with swim balls, current state and being quite heavily used at the moment, we are okay for permission, but we will be keeping it under review and wanting to not be dropped this way.
Thank you very much. Any further questions, anybody? Can we have proposals or proof of the adoption of this strategy? Thank you very much, second there. Thank you very much, in favour? Okay, we need to, it's also a good point there. But can you move on to workforce development strategy, in charge of the resources please, Richard?
Thank you, Chair. This is the first workforce development strategy that's been presented to cabinet for approval. A strategy to provide a framework which enables to develop the workforce effectively and ensure that it's resourceful and the way necessary to deliver the county's strategic objectives. The strategy recognises the importance of the workforce and our ambition to be innovative through this. You can see from the structure that it sets out hundred priority themes, which are detailed, specific action plans, many of which are in your way in a way that is which is very important. So I don't think it's very clear, maybe you tell yourself, but certainly.
Questions? Any questions?
Thank you. I suppose, I understand where we're trying to get to and I think it's really important that we support the development of all the different work that happens. But I can see where we're trying to get to with it. I suppose my concern is, within the challenges that we list, probably the discussions that we've had, both in council and in cabinet, we seem to be missing the development of commercial skills, commissioning, contract management, all that type of thing. There seems to be no mention of it within, as areas that we want to develop our workforce, which is for me a little bit worrying on both. We talk about management leadership and that type of thing, but I think it's an key area for me that has to be made sure that that is a skill set that we are improving.
Thank you, Chair, I know. It is an area which we have already tried to improve. We've talked a series about contract management and done our discussion yesterday around how we increase awareness in the offices for that. It's amazing how contact and knowledge, but if cabinet have got something, it needs to be more explicitly based in the strategy agreements within stoppers, making that important. But as I said in the brief introduction, there are more detailed action plans that sit beneath the strategy to make sure that those type of things are covered.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted perhaps to catch up to Mr. Lord Wood and you, if you'd like, to share with you actually our leadership department programme, contents of which would I cover, I think, all of the aspects that you raised. Clearly, there are training programmes, supportive places for online and face-to-face training that takes data support as well. I think you're going to be quite surprised actually at the depth of what we've got. Perhaps it's a manifesto we may impose to the board, perhaps needs to be alluded to in the report, but it would be impossible to compare with the whole programme we know. But certainly, I think this is not going to be able to reassure you all.
Just for the time, sorry. We are actually in the process of developing an ELO module specifically around contract management. That's one of the areas we're pursuing at the moment. So I'd be happy to go through that in detail to you.
That's all right. Because obviously it's an area of interest for me as well, or something that I know that we do need to get better with the organisation, actually, actually authorities across the country and obviously struggling with the same. I think my one point was, for me, is one of our key challenges, so I would like to see in the strategy, because then...
We've already built on existing information we have, but there are some elements of tritiums in there. With council tax, we take effectively the existing number of properties that we have on our system, which ties in with the valuation office records. We make various deductions or exemptions, hardly properties that we can't build for a variety of reasons. Then we add in what we think might get in growth, so how many properties might come in. For business rates, we again take the existing records as a starting point and add in again what we might get in growth, what business growth we might get in, and take away what we might lose from businesses going bankrupt or having appeals and having a reduction in rate or value. So the report sets out that the proposed council tax base, in terms of business rates, we've had in yesterday the form from the government, which is called the NBR1 form that we have put in. So we'll be working on that over the next week or so. And that's why in the report I've asked for delegated authority from the portfolio holder to undertake the necessary work and complete that return in the morning.
Any questions, comments? Just a quick one there. Chair, there's a acceptable. In favour? Any answers, questions, business? Okay, we'll take it very much and we conclude with this couple of minutes.